Okay, um, ladies and gentlemen, it's seven o'clock. What the fellas need to do in order? First, it's the flag of the United States of America.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome, everybody.
Welcome.
Um, hey, David? We're having the first part of the meeting, but you're one of the first ones up there on the agenda, okay?
Sure.
Okay, okay, the first thing we have is the consent agenda for October 8th, 2024. We only have item H. We'll remove that, revoke the bond from the one permit listed there. There's some extenuating circumstances that is.
What?
Item A.
Being on the consent agenda or a new business?
Business.
Agenda.
Yeah. Consent agenda.
Just go H, I consent.
I know, there isn't.
We're making a change to the agenda. We're taking H out.
Okay. Well, that's what I hope.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the one deletion of the new business item.
Okay, um, do you have a motion you support?
Support.
Do you have a motion to support to approve the consent agenda with one deletion from the agenda? Okay, roll call vote.
Anderson, yes.
Dan, yes.
Kozinski, yes.
Steven Ches.
Stover, yes.
Okay, motion carries. Citizens' comment. Anyone would like to address the board? We have a second citizens' comment at the end of the business portion, but if you want to address the board now, you're more free to do so.
It's a particular what we just talked about or for new business?
What's that?
For new business or for?
Anything you want.
Anything you would like.
Don't need to do this anymore.
Well, we can do it now.
Yeah, we do.
Nick Graber, 48, 48 Melrose. Um, when they see on the proposed business for a permit for a roof or re-roofing fee, I don't think we should have to pay to re-roof your own house to get a permit to re-roof your house. This is a permit. If you're, if you're doing the structure, different story. If you're changing the pitch, doing something like that, 100%. If you're just tearing off and replacing, it's just charging. Citizens, the residents, more money for nothing. Go.
Thank you.
All right. Anybody else?
Just wanted to say, like, so I'm, I'm getting into local journalism. It's called the Sacred County Voits of Publication Online. I have business cards in my wallet that I can hand them out afterwards, but, um, just thought I'd bring awareness to what I do. You know, I mostly do interviews as of right now, although I could eventually go into other publications. So just thought I would spread awareness about what I do, so.
And Eli?
I'm timing the meeting. I live in Port Huron Township. Um, I don't live in the, in the township here, but, um, trying to spread, trying to, um, have, uh, trying to serve as a kind of news function for the county if I can, so.
Well, welcome.
You're good.
Thank you, you're coming, yes.
Yeah, it's, there's a big danger where a lot of local issues aren't being reported like they used to be because a lot of traditional local outlets are going out of business.
Yep.
Well, thank you for coming.
Yeah, thank you. Anybody else? Okay, if not, we'll move on. The first thing of old business was the park entrance. We have Mr. David Leight, who's here, who's representing PM Glove Incorporated. The big issue on there, what we're facing is the park entrance, because of multiple events happening, the full extent of the park entrance, um, costs weren't covered, captured under the passport grant. And, uh, we have Mr. Leight here, who can lead us through this? Yeah. Anybody hear this?
Yes. I want to make sure that everybody get a chance to read the, uh, the document there, um, for the project for discussion tonight.
Okay, hold on there, David. We have to punch up the volume here. Okay. Is that better? Hey, David, can you?
Is that better, yes? Uh, I was just saying that I hope everybody had a chance to look over the memo that we prepared.
Yes.
Uh, good. Um, I think first and foremost, uh, one item to point out, and I just jotted this down, was that we started on this project, um, five plus years ago. Um, and even our contact with the road commission was 40 years ago, over 40 years ago. Started with, um, when we rented the location. And it was based on the master plan and based on what we had as far as that phase one of the project, the entrance. It's a total of 11 or 12 spaces. Um, at that point, uh, speaking with road commission, it was considered a low-volume entrance. And as what we designed accordingly, we had several conversations with Andrew McNiff, an engineer, providing engineer with road commission. And, uh, he even let us know that we needed a pulver pipe underneath that gave us the size that he wanted to see there. Kind of see, since it had to, uh, at the bottom of the first base July, two years ago, we, as far as the construction plan, we got the, uh, funding for phase one. And, uh, that was still a point that he said, okay, we need to provide a low-volume, uh, entrance. And you can kind of see on page two, that's again what we had on the plan. And even that, you can see the road commission's drawing there for a low-volume entrance. We applied for that. We mounted it for that project. Uh, and I think I want to make sure Joe was right. I think they just had the one bid received from that at that time. And we were working on phase two. And I decided, uh, we also got grant funding for phase two. So we, at that time, really decided to combine those two and go out to the big again. And I think that's where, uh, the issue arose. We increased the parking spaces to the 22 spaces there. And we sent it to the road commission. They did not give us an indication that there was any issue. But when we put together the construction plans and then started talking about permitting with them, that's when they came back and said, well, this is now a medium volume, uh, entrance. And we looked at it right there and see on page three, it says the usage for 25, 500 spaces for vehicles. We have 22, and we had a lot of discussion about that. And their interpretation at that point kind of morphed to, um, well, it's trips, how many trips in, you know, for a one vehicle, there's a trip in and there's a trip out of the park. And that's at that point. And it was in October 23 that they discussed the medium volume entrance. So you can see that's a year after we had put in for the end-up funding with the grants, the front grants. At that point, we continued to work with them and the contractor. And they kind of slowly walked some more requirements for us. And they just kept on adding, whether it was pipe size or a little more concrete here. We didn't get bearings for some things. Didn't have to add a kind of an approach lane. We convinced them that since there was an extra lane or a decel lane out there on the highway already, we didn't have to add that. We didn't have to pave all the way to the right-of-way line since that right-of-way for the highway is still very wide. But they wouldn't give us the bearings for this lower volume, uh, entrance. Now, we can get, like you said, that's kind of got us to where they are and were, uh, just obviously. I think that's a good point to maybe take your questions. See where they may be.
I have a question. Um, I went back through some of my park paperwork that I've had. And I found a, um, a drawing, and it was dated July 22nd, 2019. And on here, it has parking 40 cars, parking 13 cars. So back in 2019, it must have been discussed how many parking spots we were going to have. So I would like to know how we went from potentially 53 parking spots down to 12 up to 22. Where's the timeline and why did that change?
Sure. Um, now, we prepared the master plan back in 2019. And that includes even the, the, uh, crossing the wetlands and going deeper into the park. We actually had a few more spaces, uh, back in there. Since, and this happens all the time, uh, probably with the township as well as our projects. We do these projects and we start them in phases based on the amount of, uh, funding you can get for rent. So initially, um, we have worked with the township to say we want to get an entrance to this park, assign entrance in just the beginning. And that was how it was decided to have the nickname of, and, and just a minimum number of spaces. And that's what we then were due to, uh, put in for the first initial grant request. Since time passed, and when we did on that, uh, there was the next grant application. And we expanded it to the pavilion and, uh, some additional spaces. The expectation would be to continue to then extend the parking and, um, you know, in another grant application or in future, future funding years. So we worked with road commission based on the initial, uh, 12 spaces and then ultimately 22. With the expectation that we would potentially, uh, go further based on that master plan. Oftentimes, we work with just what the money that we have now. They certainly, at the construction of the park fully and how long it takes, uh, would there be some expectation that they may request some upgrade to the entrance, certainly? But that simply wasn't within the budget of the project then.
So I guess I'm having a hard time understanding because I thought that initially we had said there was going to be three phases. Phase one, we were going to do, and then when we got funding, we would do phase two. And then when we got funding, we would do phase three. So ultimately, we were always going to do the three phases. So if we were going to add parking spots in phase two, why wouldn't we have thought ahead and did an entrance that could cover that instead of, you know, doing like a small entrance or a light-duty entrance, adding more parking spots 10 years down the road or whatever, and having to redo that? That, I, I just don't understand that.
And it really comes down to budget, um, and what the township at the time had for matching the budget. It, it was real, that's, that's really what it was. Was at that time, um, the funding for the project also went off in the road commission. We, we viewed this, uh, as a fairly low-volume entrance. Even with the park built out, it's, it's a park. It's not, uh, a commercial entity in the true sense of a, a commercial project that you would have retail or over office. Um, so we kind of figured that such had those discussions initially with the road commission. Uh, and they agreed.
So I'm, I'm also looking at a memo from you, David, um, July 10th, 2021. And in there, you said, we propose to add the proposed pavement pavilion with tables, expand the parking lot size, and create the open plain lawn by adding the perimeter walkway. So in 2021, you guys had talked, talked about expanding the parking lot size. But then in October or November of 2023, all of a sudden, then it was, we're doing it 22 parking spots, but now we have to get a medium-duty entrance.
Right.
So I, I'm still going back to the fact that I, I can't comprehend why we wouldn't think ahead to do a heavy, heavier-duty entrance than just doing the, the lightweight.
Well, because of that, at that time, it still was very narrow where discussions were, it still was considered a low-volume, uh, entrance. So I've been thinking ahead to the final build-out for the park. Certainly, we tried to do that, but again, it really just comes down to the amount of, of funding and, and budgets that we had provided to us at that time.
It seems to me you were balancing the, the, the construction of the infrastructure of the park for people to use with the size of the entrance. And you were trying to make the size of entrance that was minimal at the time so you could, uh, invest in the development of the park as much as possible. And you felt you could do that under the guidance of what the road commission told you to that time, true?
I believe that's accurate, yes.
You got blindsided by the road commission, essentially.
Now, David, um, the Sacred County Road Commission, their trigger for a medium-duty entrance is 18, I mean, 25 feet on parking places or higher. Is that correct?
Well, you know, they said, you know, they can see on the, uh, on the drawings, there's 25 vehicles, uh, per day. Uh, we interpreted that as then 25 spaces. Uh, it wasn't until 2023, 2024 that it was, oh, that's not vehicles or spaces, that's trips. And I think that's where we felt a little bit, uh,
Trips.
Well, that wasn't mentioned in our previous conversations. We were interpreting as simply, uh, parking spaces.
So even with our change order request, which is at 42,290, we may still be expected to expand on the entrance of this park as we move along.
Hey, David. As it's designed now, it would not require any, what gets permitted design now, there wouldn't be any expansion on that entrance.
All right.
So under medium volume, and this is the other thing that you've had discussions with Joe about this. You can see the range of medium volume is 25 to 500 spaces. That's quite a range.
What?
So, and, you know, anything else? We're not requiring any, any additional, uh, treatment to the entrance.
All right. So that at least is better news.
I mean, so this entrance will be basically good forever. I mean, it's just. Okay. Any other questions?
I, I have questions about this, but he can't answer that. Mr. Ward would have to answer that, so. I, here's my question, I'll just tell you. So if I'm looking at his, what we paid him in December, he signed this in November. We paid him $36,290. And the description was an aggregate base for apron slash lot. I understand that's for the parking lot and the apron? It's not broken out, but nowhere around here is that credited. And if we already paid some for the aggregate base that's already there, then why isn't that broken out and taken off where this says credit for bid item $6,000? Why isn't that taken off? Right, and then on, on this, on this change order request, it says aggregate base, and, and they're charging us another $10,500. So I checked it this twice. Well, I don't know. Is it extra stuff because they made it bigger? How much did they charge us before? I, I don't know.
Did that come up at the meeting with Ward that you guys had?
I didn't have a meeting with Ward.
Oh, I got it.
No, Cully and I, no, sorry.
So I don't know.
Did that come up on that?
No, it did not. I mean, that's something that is worth pointing out to answer.
Go on, David.
Uh, I was just missing it. I mean, I think that's an excellent question. I jotted that down even in the evening tonight. Uh, went back to the initial bid and, uh, I would guess see the credit years would be asphalt and the pipe, but not aggregate. Uh, not some of the mobilization that had already happened. And I know they discussed about remobilizing, which we understand. So I, I think there probably is some more questions to ask.
About the aggregate, I don't know the remobilization. And that's just going to keep going up and why we put this project off, especially if we put it off till spring. And he has to mobilize these people and get them.
Well, the mobilization of the various contractors.
Yes.
The cement workers, the dentists, the asphalt layers.
If he has to get them all back together again, that's going to cost us.
Okay.
So I guess our discussion will have to continue with Mr. Ward about the aggregate cost.
Okay.
Which, of course, expand as the entrance expands.
Well, the one thing though, I mean, the thing is, if we put this off, okay, to discuss, and I'm not saying putting it off is a bad thing, it's that they're up against a ton of momentum for the season.
Yeah, November 1st is when they shut down the, the asphalt plants. So, and, you know, unless you want somebody coming up here from Indiana with a parking lot of asphalt, you deal with Ward. Thank you, David.
Okay, any other questions?
If there are any, anything else for me, I'm happy to, uh, to try and.
Um, no, not from here, Jennifer.
This is a question for you, why, why do I have that?
I'm not aware of this, this person ever seen.
Somebody had them review plans for the park. It was me.
Yeah.
But we have a $200 bill for PCE reviewing our stuff in the park, so someone should have talked to them.
Oh, yeah. I did, I had, I sent that over to, um, yeah, I apologize. I did send it over to John Monty, her Ward thing, to take a look at, just to get their impression. And John assigned it to one of his engineers, and she just said it seems a little high. She didn't give much.
So her pants were $100, turns out it's all high?
Yeah.
Okay.
Give me a hundred bucks, I could have told you that.
I, I would have, and that was a lot cheaper.
For 50, I'm already here. Does anybody else have any discussion, comments for Mr. Ward here?
No, thank you.
Okay. All right there, David, um, we're all set.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for, appreciate it. All right. As I see it, we have a couple options here. One, we have Mr. Ward, um, we'll have to have a median Mr. Ward, the council board, because this got some of these issues.
I thought we had asked for that before, I want, I thought we had talked about having Pam Lau and Ward at the same meeting so we could ask questions. Because the more we keep postponing it, like you said, it's just going to keep getting more expensive.
I think now we deal with Mr. Ward. Uh, Pam Lau and David, they've given us what they can give us. Um, we know what has to be done. Now we're talking costs. And, um, Mr. Ward was here and his chief foreman was here, very knowledgeable young man. We have more questions on this aggregate. So we better get going with this, or we're going to see higher costs come spring and no park open. So.
I can call on a meeting to have a mini or special meeting to explain this a lot.
Well, he's been here once, let's hope his patience holds out that those of us who don't deal with contracting, they're now, they're wrecked a little. They know what they're doing, and they have to work within the confines of what the road commission tells them. So let's see if we can get the cost down, and if we can get the cost down a little bit, let's go forward. We just, it's just going to cost us more in the springtime.
All right, so your, the motion you're making is?
Get Mr. Ward in here and see if we can discuss, um, a little bit of price differences. Right now, we're looking, what are we looking at? $42,290. Check your balance and what you have in parks and wreck and see if you can swing that.
Okay. Does anyone have a support for that motion?
What kind, what kind of motion was it?
If I move Ward in here and try to.
We've had Mr. Ward deal. Yes. Now we're different prices. There's, there's really nothing else. They, they can only put in what the road commission allows them to put in. We've dodged the bullet by not having to have a center turn lane, thank God, um, at the park. We've got our deceleration lanes approved. It's a difficult area simply because it's so close to, uh, an exit and entrance ramp on the expressway and right next to, uh, the deceleration lanes at the, the gas station.
And parking right across the street.
Yeah, it's a, it's a dicey little quarter area, quarter mile of entrance and egress. I don't think there's going to be that much traffic in and out, but nevertheless, it's a dicey piece of. So they're doing what the road commission's telling them to do and we just dodged the bullet by not having to put in a center turn lane. So they could have very easily told us we had to do that. So they're dealing with costs too. They're dealing with costs, they're dealing with time. And they're dealing with road commission standards. And you don't get around road commission standards. I don't care, I don't care what kind of contractor you are. You dance to their tune, they own the roads. So if we can get Mr. Ward in here and his superintendent, is that Mr. Carnegie?
Yeah.
Mr. Carnegie. If we can just see if there's any wiggle room on these prices to help your budget. You can only go so far with the parks and rec budget that we have. And then we're at a standstill. Then we, then we count on Pam Lau to furrow out more money from the state with these grants. And that pays forever.
Yes, they do.
But that's the only way that young townships can go.
Okay.
Unless one of you wants to leave like millions to the park. Put it in your will, put it in your trust. If not, then you're dealing with monetary matters that are finite.
Okay. We have a motion made, we have support for that.
What's the motion?
Meet with Ward.
I don't think you need a motion for that, it would just be postponed, meet with Ward. I don't think you need a motion for that.
I agree. We can just do it.
Just meet with Ward, Carnegie and whoever that young gentleman was that was very knowledgeable that was here with Mr. Ward.
Mitch, that's a second.
Mr. Mitch.
Okay, I'll set that up. I'll set it up, you know, I'll contact him tomorrow and we'll get this set up, okay? Okay, any other questions? Okay. Next one, master plan update. Mr. Kessin. Great to see you back, sir.
Good evening, this is everybody again. So I think while we're here to discuss the master plan, I can give you a brief synopsis today. The, as you all know, the township or any community is required to update its master plan every five years. If you haven't seen the ordinance. We, the planning commission started that process about a year ago to begin to update master plan. We've worked with them and prepared a draft, a draft only. And the state requires that we provide public notice of sixty-three days and which is solicit comments. Everybody would like change what they like, what they don't like. Those changes, those comments would come back to me. I would make changes to the ordinance, to the master plan itself. Submit them back to the planning commission, who would then schedule a public hearing, allow thirty days, then the public would come in and make comments on it. The planning commission at that time would adopt a master plan or not adopt the master plan. By law, the township board also has the right to adopt the master plan. But the planning commission is the sole authority for a master plan adoption. We're at the process now, we're at the...
Okay, I'm sorry, Steve, you said the planning commission, they adopt the master plan over the board, Ken?
Yes.
Or does the board recommend it?
No, no.
Okay.
Planning commission can also adopt, usually that comes after the planning commission's adoption.
Okay.
Unless the board disagrees.
You don't adopt it then.
The board, I don't know, it's not...
Yeah, so you have a planning commission that's adopting it, the board is not...
The final decision is with the board, correct?
No.
Oh, it's not with...
With the planning commission. Okay, but you don't have to implement that, that's the key.
That'd be what's designed, wouldn't it?
That's a quirky law, clearly. Very quirky.
So we can set it by...
Basically, it was designed to take politics out of the master plan. During the end of the sixty-three day period, I know probably you have some comments, I'd love if you could share with me either here tonight or send it to me. As of yet, I haven't received no comments on the master plan anyway. I have not received any, I don't know if the township has received any from the county yet. I mean, that's not unusual. They haven't responded, that means they don't have a problem. Surrounding communities haven't responded, the thing is, if you don't, you typically don't have a problem. But, you know, I'm still waiting for...
The last time we did this, we had a visioning session where there were a lot of people, several of us and everything. And they had comments about the master plan.
That was the county master plan?
No, that was not.
But that was in the very beginning of the process.
Yeah, the beginning, yeah.
Yeah, that was not the end. But we can hold a public hearing so we can have people in here
Yes.
and discuss this.
Absolutely.
Before it goes back to the planning commission.
Yes.
Somebody can make a cake and bring tea. And, and we can invite our neighbors in to see how the township's going to go forward, at least in the next five years.
And we won't, that's the purpose of it.
And that's what I would like to see. I'd like to get that out in the public. I would like to have this room filled with people who have access to the plans that are out there, get their comments, get them back to you and get that process rolling.
I totally agree.
I like the way that's done. Yes, ma'am.
So where's the access to the master plan to look at, to look at in route?
It's online right now.
It's online.
On the website that just finally got up, on Castor website?
Now, we, we didn't have like a visioning session, but we did do a public survey.
Well, we basically, we had a public survey and we had a special agenda. Every planning commission meeting separate that we allowed the public input. We received a lot of public input.
Wonderful. Good.
Yeah, I'm a planner, I can only put it together.
Yeah, you can just offer the information.
Other than work for you.
That's right.
I mean, we made the public vision on this.
Yes.
To implement something, I mean, you're not going to be able to implement a public something on it.
That's right. So these comments that you've had at planning commission meetings, has there been a number of them?
There have been, basically, most of the comments at the planning commission meeting have been not wanting to have major development across Marin City Highway. So the planning commission kind of looks into that and directed me at that time to keep the industrial area to where it's at now and not expand it.
Not expand, not expand west of Melder Road?
Church, Melder Road.
Melder?
Yeah. Melder?
Melder.
In fact, they even drafted that we only go back on that eastern part, only a quarter mile, instead of a half mile, which was once envisioned.
Oh, the depth off twenty-six?
I beg your pardon?
You're talking about the depth, depth back off twenty-six under the...
The depth back off there's, oh, well...
Yeah.
That's not...
The depth from the master plan, this is only a proposal, is that when a half mile deep to approximately a half mile east of Eway and then a quarter mile to Melder.
Okay. It hasn't changed.
No.
Nothing has changed.
They listened to the residents who wanted to halt the dolphin.
And even this was when they had that Marin City corridor study. The planning group who did that agreed with our current zoning, our master plan. Matter of fact, I was shocked by that, that it almost mirrored ours exactly.
It did.
So. Now we have enough industrial zoning in place right now.
And I believe I provided a brief analysis, analysis in here how it relates to the county's adopted master plan and it's fairly consistent. Not to say there are other things that you guys want to change, and if there are, if there's type always or if there's
Well, yes, yes, housekeeping.
I'd love to know what they are, so if you can send them to me or give them to me.
Yeah, that's just...
I can talk to you after.
Perfect.
Housekeeping.
Can you send them to me or give them to me?
I'll just give it to you back, I want to take a couple minutes afterwards just to like, because some of them are just questions I have real quick.
Okay, after the speech?
Is that all right?
Sure, absolutely.
I think the most interesting part, well, the master plan and strategies moving forward, like for agricultural preservation. And I'm not sure if we have ever, if there's ever been really attempts in the township like selling development rights or stuff like that to encourage. I mean, right now, you know, we don't have no large developments. What we're having is existing farmland or wooded areas getting broken up into five, ten acre homes. That's what currently is happening.
In order to implement some of those programs, you'd be zoning revisions, obviously. And in order to do a zoning revision, you gotta have like the basis in your master plan, your master plan lays that basis.
Okay, yeah.
I say move along with the public here.
I'd love to, get this done.
Yeah. Any other questions? Does any member of the audience have any question for Mr. Kessin?
So you do a master plan once every five years?
Master plan is typically done every five years. A community can elect not to do one, but they have to pass a resolution and nothing has changed that they can rely on like previous five years ago.
The last time we did a full blown one like we're doing now was back in ninety-six. And we have just been minor modifications since then. But we decided now to just to revisit it and, you know, it's been over twenty, about twenty-five years and do a full blown new master plan. Okay, thanks, Steve. All right. Okay. New business, we have proposed fees for re-roofing permits. According to the building code, the state building code, we have to have inspections done on the re-roofing projects.
Can you point to, from this document where it says that? Because I tried to find that.
Yeah.
And I did find that we have to have permits for erection and operation of buildings and structures, which is not re-roof, but not for re-roof.
You're saying tear offs, you gotta take that permit?
I don't see what it says in, I'd like to know that we have to do that if we're gonna ask.
Yeah, I think State of Michigan also says ordinary maintenance doesn't need a permit.
Exactly.
And that is ordinary maintenance.
Exactly.
Brenda?
I fully anticipated that Roland would be here this evening to answer any questions because under his direction, these provisions were provided to the board. I am certainly absolutely not qualified. Roland is really the only person in this room that is not here.
Right. This Michigan code is twenty fifteen.
That's the current code we're under.
That's the current code and we have not done that. This is the first time that we're looking at any of these fees.
Who came up with this?
And any, well, the Michigan, the state of Michigan.
I never heard of it.
The Michigan. It's right here. So we have just not enforced it apparently.
Where does it say that we have to inspect a re-roof on this? I don't see it.
So I think Roland's the only person that...
Well, I mean, I survived it and really, I think I really, I can't find that.
I think, I think the premise of this whole thing goes to the, let's see here. The first page here says scope and administration. On the second page, duties and powers of the building official.
Yes.
So I believe, and I'm just, this is just my opinion from conversations that have been had. Section R one oh four, R one oh four point one general is basically the crux of the purpose of this. Section R one oh four, duties and powers of the building official. The very first paragraph, I think, is what Roland was leaning towards for the purpose of re-roofing permits. But I really think, in all honesty, this might be a matter that you want on table until such time. Roland can unequivocally point out the section that you've been looking for here.
Yes, because it says the building officials should have the authority to render interpretations of this code.
But where in the code it doesn't say it, it does.
And if it does say it, Roland is the person who's pointed out to you. And I don't know why he isn't here.
So my bottom line is, are we in trouble with the state of Michigan if we do not charge fees and permit fees, et cetera, et cetera? And if, if we are, let's hope to God this is not retroactive.
The fees that are on that first page are basically, with the exception of the administration fee. That fee constitutes the building department clerks accepting the application, making sure everything is in the proper order to be handed on to not only the building official, but also our zoning administrator. And then ultimately generating the permit, taking the money, that's, that's done.
And I can see that.
The plan review fee is the minimum we charge for plan reviews. Plan reviews can go up to, in a residential situation, up to one hundred and twenty-five dollars. So this is the minimum.
So we, so somebody who is merely tearing off shingles and reshingling a roof, which is in good stead, not being...
No plywood being...
No, nothing, nothing changing in any way, we can charge, we, it is proposed to charge them for a plan review and administration fee, inspection, inquire, I'm sorry, per inspection inquiry seventy-five, to charge them these fees for a perfectly sound roof that is just being re-shingled.
Up until this point in time, when someone called and says they're going to be doing a re-roof, our question to them is, are you changing the structure or are you just tearing off shingles, replacing rotted plywood or whatever? I don't know, I say plywood, I'm old, but whatever it is.
It's much that it could be.
Yes. And if they are just tearing off and replacing and not changing the actual structure itself, we have told them, for the nineteen, almost twenty years I've been here, we do not require a permit.
And I prefer it remain like that.
So...
Yeah.
It's also in the state of Michigan's code buried in there that it's for, they don't require a permit unless it's four full sheets of plywood. And then after that, you have to get a permit.
If you require four full sheets of plywood, then you got a hole in your roof.
That's why, that's why we need Roland here to show that to us. And if we don't need that, we don't have it.
I just don't want.
I mean, Bowen, she's gonna be the only person, I don't know why.
Then he should be here.
My understanding of it is that Roland feels that the building inspector has a right to require those things at his discretion. If I read that, documents seems to indicate that the building inspector has a lot of latitude. We have never had a building inspector that felt that was necessary. For some reason, Roland now feels it is necessary. That's pretty clear. And why that is, I don't know. I asked before if there have been problems with roofs, people putting out roofs that are no good and giving them a health and safety hazard or whatever. Roland has put out an example of that. And the way I read this is, you don't have to inspect something, you don't put a light fixture in, replace an old one, put a plug in because your plug went bad or your switch, you don't have to get a permit to do that. And this is quite similar to that. In fact, even if you have, if you have an old, the way I read this, if you had an old house and the roof slope wasn't right, you could still replace that roof. You don't have to change the slope of your roof. It's, if it's grandfathered in before the, you know, the ordinance. It's not something that, I don't think, I don't think we should do this.
The only thing I could see maybe is with all these insurance companies and these roofers, because there's been an issue in Ontario with insurance companies coming and doing this and they put down one strip of ice and water...
and they put down one strip vice and water guard, and then they lay shingles right on bare plywood all the way up. So they're basically effectively doing nothing for the roof.
So.
Well, that's why you have a licensed builder and contractor. If you don't, then you're just throwing good money after bad or bad money after good. And that's on you.
But it's, it's about money all the time. The cheaper is usually where people are gonna go.
Well, fine, you know, that's, yeah.
So, okay, it looks like here we have the, well, our building inspector needs to appear here and show us unequivocally and the building code that will require to do the.
I just, I, I don't want to be, I don't want to be in trouble with the state of Michigan. I don't want our residents to be in trouble with the state of Michigan. And, yeah, and, and that's what I worry about.
Okay.
If we haven't done this in our, with our building department that is very conscientious about everything they do, if this has not been done since twenty fifteen, and all these poor people have been putting roofs on their house, willy nilly.
Who came up with this over there?
I mean, the, are you a just Roland?
No, I'll talk about two thousand and fifteen.
Well.
That's just the last time, that's the last time you updated.
The last updated code.
They do it every single year or something.
Yeah, that's the last updated code.
There's amendment in there, they amended something.
And I know that there are a lot of insurance, or roofing companies going around right now looking for roof damage. And I know that they call their insurance company and the insurance company will come out and see if you have damage. And you can file a claim and they will come out and look. And if they don't think that you've got roof damage, they're not covering it. And you just call the guy who went up on your roof and looked at it and say, I'm sorry, but they're not covering this. And that guy will go away. You will never see him again. This is an opportunistic period of time because a category three storm was detected in the area and that unleashed all of these roofers to come out and work with, with companies, with your insurance company. But your insurance company, if they say no, that roofer will go right away because he's not gonna get any money.
All right.
But it's up to you, if you hire a roofer, to make sure he's a reputable person. And Brenda, have you gotten numerous calls in your office about bad roofing projects in the last, how many years? My problem with roofing when it's roofing season is finding big black garbage bags of shingles in my creek. That's the biggest problem I have with roofers and shingles.
And a homeowner paying a permit's not gonna stop that.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, so we just put this on?
So we just say, no.
Put it on, hold and tell them.
We don't wanna do it.
I don't wanna do it. And if he wants it done, he has to come here and explain to us.
Yeah, that's, that's what I meant.
If, if that's what he wants to do, fine, put him on the agenda. But we're, I'm not willing to do this.
Right, no.
So are we doing a motion or are we just?
Post voting, the building inspector, if he wants to come to show us unequivocally where this falls in the building code.
It's table, we can.
Yeah. Okay.
That's what I see.
Item B, snow removal contract. I have three bids out right now. D and E, DeBucks, and Motor City. DeBucks and D and E are per push contracts. Well, Motor City is a seasonal one. Motor City, he was supposed to send me one that he would include the cemetery upon our request on this. He hasn't gotten back to me on that.
Did you split out the scope of work for each of these bids the same? Or is it both out differently?
No, no, they're all the same. That.
Then why did they bid it differently? I don't get it. I mean, do you have a scope of work that you can show us that kind of we can compare to the bids? I'm sort of grinding an ax. I think we should be consistent in the way we solicit bids. So we get apples and apples and oranges and oranges. We're getting apples and oranges all together, some pears as well.
I did it. It was for one inch of snow for the two lots here, straight the, the walks and the ramps. And to do cemetery time requests.
And did you wanna see?
Motor City and DeBucks say one inch and D and E says two to four inches. So we can afford them to be in it?
But to me, that right now.
Hmm?
That's what we have.
I know.
And they were expensive last time.
Well, and my, my thing is, there's a lot of them, and I know we're just a little township, but we are a business. And if it starts snowing and they wait three or four hours and we have residents coming walking, you know, that's, somebody has to come and either do the walkways or something.
It's even dangerous for us.
Absolutely. How many times have we all gone?
Yeah, so we need to have a time on that. And I hear it's gonna be a wet, snowy winter. Not that I wanna put a curse on anything, but that's just what I heard.
And then also, they have to be willing to, like, for our election, if it's snowing, any days of early voting or election or whatever, they have to be able to clear both lots for us.
So the cemetery wasn't included in I, in the two bids that I was looking at?
Which ones is it?
Motor City and DeBucks.
DeBucks, yeah, they didn't include the cemetery. I gave you an update.
It's an update, there's an updated one.
Oh, sorry. So does anyone have a preference?
The only one that I read has a, the command to begin the problems, DeBucks, I believe, within three hours. Is that good enough?
Okay, Casco Township seeking bid for twenty-four, twenty-five season. Listed here are the specifications, township is seeking. Contract period between one November and thirty April. Snow plow to be done, okay, at the Township Hall, north and south park lot, connecting sidewalks and handicap, accessible ramps. Snow plow begins at one inch of snowfall. Salting begins at one inch of snowfall. Salting will occur after a freezing rain. Snow plow in a cemetery upon request. Salting due to other weather conditions not listed above to take place upon request.
Yeah.
So which one is this? That was his.
Yeah, that's what I sent out.
And this is what we got. Well, wasn't there a problem last year with them not coming in at a reasonable time?
Yeah, that's why we're not going with them.
A couple of times, so we're not going with them.
They're very busy, very busy, and they're very good. Yes, they are. They're a reputable company and they're very good.
They're a lot, they're a lot more punctual than early bird earls.
They're expensive.
Yeah, they are.
And it's four hours with them when it reaches two inches.
Just called. Yeah, that's why I, that's why.
And DeBucks, DeBucks is one inch in three hours.
Yeah.
And Little Motor City is also snow plowing park in the area, but after one inch.
One inch, yeah.
Yeah.
So here's my question though. So if it snows and they have three hours to get here, in that three hours, who's gonna clear the sidewalks? Cause if we open a special, then who's gonna be shoveling?
Somebody, not me.
I mean.
I did too much of that.
Yeah.
I'll come and shovel.
No, no, I mean, I could.
Well, I'm just saying, for the safety of not only our employees but the residents, that needs to be, like, if it's snowing when we first get here, that needs to be done immediately.
I mean, yeah, I mean, we just.
And they have to have the flexibility, like I said, if it's election day or whatever, we need to call them and they need to come. And that's something that needs to be on the contract, so I would say.
Motor City Grading seems to be located in Casco Township.
Yeah, I remember you.
Yes, Tyler.
Let's try Motor City Grading for this season. Let's see how we do with them.
That's not a per push.
What's that?
That's not a per push, that's a total for the whole season. So if it's a snowy season, it'd be a good deal.
Is there a problem with DeBucks?
No, I'm just looking at a Casco township.
Well, and also true, also true about for salting in that, salting a park near sidewalks at contract point discretion.
Well, it could be there. DeBucks has it too, salting and plowing is done at DeBucks discretion, which is not safe. That's probably a little clause that. So it's a hundred dollars per, per, per push. Yeah. Which if it's snowing for three hours and it comes down, you could be looking at that. And they would come out right away, you don't need that also.
It looks like, it looks like Motor City is per event, it's not a total for the year. It's per event.
Well, that's per event, that's thirty-five hundred dollars per.
Yeah, that's ridiculous.
Oh, that's too much. No, that's too much. Okay, if that's for the whole.
Oh, it is per event, yes.
Oh.
But then over here, it says the total cost for plow and service for the twenty-four, twenty-five winter season is, that's.
I think you meant per, per season.
Yeah, not per year.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
There'd be some very expensive snow.
Well, it doesn't, it's not clear what it's for, it says per event.
Yeah, but look there, total.
I know that, it says that.
Clarify before you sign the contract.
Yeah, I think so.
I'll do it for twenty-five November.
Twenty-five hundred or twenty-five bucks?
Twenty-five hundred. All right, I'm here. We have this thing about the elections and that. We added, and anything else?
No.
Okay.
Probably we won't get any cemetery away after the elections.
And that's, the one thing, if you're proportion, you have a very mild winter, you come out ahead. But if you have a really snowy one, you have a set price, serves you there.
Colin said it's gonna be snow.
Yeah, we're overdue for a bad winter.
We are.
Yeah.
My woolly caterpillar say mild.
They did, huh?
Give your woolly caterpillar.
They are brown.
Brenda, wanna go?
I say Motor City.
What's that?
Motor City four.
All right.
Casco?
I'll go with Motor City.
Okay, you're making a motion?
I'll make a motion tonight, to hire Motor City for snow removal and ice management. I mean, for thirty-five, for thirty-five hundred, twenty dollars for the whole season. If it's for the whole season.
Yeah, if it's, yeah, oh, yeah.
And I'll, Jennifer, I'll make sure that, where we choose, you know, the, for the election.
Yeah, so just real quick, I took that thirty-five, twenty, and I divided it by a hundred because on DeBucks, that's his a hundred per occurrence. That would mean, that would be equal to thirty-five times coming out here.
Thirty bucks, huh?
And I guess through the winter, do you think so?
Well, I'm just saying, is that over again?
There's a whole plow that's causing the bad effect.
Yeah, but that's, that's per, per occurrence. And I mean, it could be, it could, you know, it could be three inches or whatever, so it may be more. But that's just like, basically, if it's one to three inches, DeBucks is charging a hundred dollars.
But that's per push.
Per occurrence, yeah.
For push.
That's what they mean, when they come out.
Yeah, that's it, just one push.
Okay, yeah, okay. So what I'm saying is it would take thirty-five times to equal that, that they're gonna come out thirty-five times. Okay, if it's snowy.
It's a gamble.
It's a gamble, yeah.
I had Motor City plow for me for two winters. And he was right off of church on Lythero. And I told him that I needed to have my driveway plowed no later than eight o'clock in the morning so I could get to work. And he was generally there by seven-thirty. So I'm thinking if he, if he perhaps stressed that to him, cause he's a very nice young man, that he would do his utmost.
Especially since he's some workup.
He's just on road.
Let's give a casual business, our business.
Okay, if you wanna have the arbitration, you'd use the whole harness clause. You'd like that to be. And the arbitration clause. Those can be important.
Okay, we have a motion and support on the table.
The motion and support.
Gina made the motion, telling support. They have Motor City plant, um, grading, there's a snow removal for twenty-four, twenty-five season.
Motor City, and you're gonna tell them that we need to have them here before eight.
Before eight.
And during election time, they need to be on call and we need them. And I think that needs to be changed here before anybody signs it.
Okay, before eight, election time, call, gone calling time. I'll have me have the cemetery too.
And another question, when we have DeBucks, we had.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion on the floor and the other discussion. We'll call vote.
Anderson, no.
I'm abstaining.
Kaczynski, yes.
Oh, yeah, we're doing, we're doing the vote on for, for this one.
What is the vote so far?
Right now, we, I'm.
I said no.
You said no?
They abstained.
Why are you abstaining? Can you abstain?
Well, you can abstain, I don't know why.
The reason I abstain is I feel it, even though we, I requested that we have a specific set of scope of work when these things are bid out, so that everybody's bidding in the same way. If they wanted, we could scope the work so that we get both a yearly cost and a per push cost. But we don't have things that compare, they're, they're apples and oranges. And I'm uncomfortable with that.
Okay, but I.
And I'm also uncomfortable with the whole harness clause and the arbitration clause. And when I was doing this kind of stuff, I would have struck those right away. I'm not gonna absolve our contractor of any liability for anything and agree to defend them and pay their lawyers' costs. I just won't do that. So I really don't, can't support it, but I think that maybe one potential point, one could.
Okay. All right, it comes up to me. And I was actually, when you did the math on it, thirty-five occurrences, that's a lot of. All right, it comes up to me, and I was actually, when you did the math on it, 35 occurrences, that's a lot of occurrences. Yeah, so.
All right, let's bid it out the way Dan wants to bid out.
Okay, so, because that was bid out, it's over to DeBucks too.
Yeah, I would write in DeBucks.
So, okay.
The only thing I would suggest is if, if we're gonna have a special meeting to have Ward, I would have that so that you can get the contracts done before November.
Absolutely.
We need to put the one inch in, whether you wanna push by push or.
Okay.
So we can compare them.
Okay, all right. Okay, the next murder business is pest exterminator contract.
Before you can start.
Yes.
I know Vicky told you that we're in a contract with Oregon until the end of March.
Right, oh, end of March.
So all this stuff, because I know she said something to you, but all these are the quotes are in the media.
Okay, so we'll just. That's all we were on now. Okay. Hall offices and cleaning contract. They had a request in, you get cleaning services for the hall and the offices here. We had two. We had Great Lakes. They're at $315 per week. And they'll clean all 37 windows inside and outside twice a year, spring and fall, for $220 to clean. And then we had a second quote from Star Power Cleaning. For $130 per week. Okay, let's see, I have this written down here. Okay, so, okay, Great Lakes, Star Power Cleaning is, it's, when we get the addition, so it's gonna be $220 a week. Windows, $175. Twice a year, so it's 350. So altogether, their total comes to $11,790 per year. And Great Lakes Solutions comes out to $16,820 per year. Star Power Cleaning Services are out of Chesterfield, Great Lakes Building Solutions is out of Richmond.
Have they come out and looked at the place, not like the last one, just so for the phone, he gave us a bid and says, yeah, then they went to race.
Both of them come out and they look out and they took measurements. Any questions on these?
How much was the total for Great Lakes?
Great Lakes is, would be $16,820 per year.
How much, 16,000?
Yep, so, and Star Power Cleaning would be $11,790 per year.
No, we're not doing the 16,000.
Are you, are you making a motion? Any questions? Okay, anyone gonna make a motion?
Vote for Ward's.
Okay.
There's no way.
Okay, next item on the agenda is the St. Clair County Clerk's Office Election Invoice Number 24-0806CA.
So this is from the August election. This is for doing the programming, the county, the county gets the programming from Election Source. So that cost is from Election Source. I guess the county charges us $50 to do that. The newspaper publication, we split that with everybody in the county because the county just does one publication for all of us. And then the ballot, holding day and the ballot shipping. So unfortunately, I don't know why the programming's so much, but it'd be nice if we can figure out how to do that ourselves or have the county do it or something, because if Election Source is charging each jurisdiction in the state of Michigan, $3,000, they're making.
They're making a bit of money. Yeah, they're making a bit of money.
A ton of money.
These elections are just.
Is this thing.
Out of the park.
Population, or just per, every township gets the same?
Every township did not get the same, because I, when I went over to Ira, Jean only had her quantity was, because it's based on how many ballots you have to. So she didn't have as many ballots, because I believe we had, was it the SC4, we had a mileage for SC4 in August, I believe. So we had two separate ballots if you were in St. Clair Community Village or not. So we had to have four ballots. So yeah, so that's why we got charged, we got charged double of what Ira did, because they had half the amount of ballots.
Okay, all right. We have a motion to pay for this.
I'm making a motion to pay the election invoice for St. Clair County Clerk's Office in the amount $3,422.8 cents.
Support.
Okay, we have a motion support to pay the election invoice for $3,422.83. Roll call vote.
Anderson, yes.
Dan, yes.
Kozinski, yes.
Stevens, yes.
Stover, yes.
Okay, motion carries. Okay, we have Pam Blau Incorporated, these are the invoices for what Mr. Light was just describing earlier in the meeting. We have one for invoice number 081424, it's for $695. And then we have invoice 091724 for $650.
I'm gonna beat a dead horse. I'm just gonna throw it out there, and I know I said this last month about the invoice we got last month. But the fact that they keep quitting continuing ongoing coordination with the road commission, how many times, how many months are they gonna coordinate with the road commission?
Hopefully this is the end. I mean, to me, they're coordinating this to death.
Well, according to that memo he sent us, that in October, November of 2023 is when the road commission told us we needed to do the other approach. So that was almost a year, it was a year ago. So why are we still being charged? But I'm, whatever. It's already done, but I'm just throwing it out there. I just.
What is it, saying people had to stop talking to the road commission?
Yeah.
Crossed it, it's more money than.
Nothing's come about, so what are you exactly, court is.
Yeah. Getting into our park funds, do you understand that?
Right, I mean, yeah, I mean, something did come about. We have to do the meeting in new centrists. Yeah, we did, you know, that was.
Yeah, but that was back in the last.
Figured that out.
I'm gonna move that we pay these two invoices in the amount we just said. And I also would like to comment that I really still believe that Pam Blau and her organization operates in good faith and also in good conscience and for the betterment of the communities that they serve. I believe that from working, you know, us seeing them for a long time. Some of the stuff's unfortunate, but it's just what happens.
Okay, we have a motion to pay these two bills.
I support.
Okay, we have a motion and support to pay the two bills for Pam Blau Incorporated. Roll call vote.
Anderson, yes.
Dan, yes.
Kozinski, yes.
Stevens, yes.
Stover, yes.
Okay, motion carries. Okay, Township Cemetery grave price.
So we had a person call and ask us if they, if we would do payment plans. So that's something we need to, I guess, figure out about the cemetery. Is that something that we'd be willing to do? And if it is, we need to have some kind of clause, like what happens if they pass away before it's paid in full? Is it something we even wanna do? And then also, this person lives in Port Huron, but they grew up in a care. They moved when they were 18, so they probably live there, you know. So she's like, do I get a resident grave or a non-resident grave? I would think that you'd have to be here to get a resident. But that's just, you know.
Well, I mean, I called some cemeteries, they don't do that. Well, one did it, they said they caused, because they did it.
The plants or the, yeah, I don't think that's a good idea.
Yeah, most say, no, you gotta, when you buy a grave, you provide a grave.
Yeah, because again, what happens?
Right.
You die. You pay one payment and then.
Right, and it goes into an interest-bearing account for perpetual care for graves, that's.
And that's how every funeral home in the area does it. They invest your money. So I would say, no, you have to make a full payment at the time.
Most cemeteries.
And you have to live here.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
To get a resident grave.
Most cemeteries, Pam Blau, we're on the last grave that's been paid for for us.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
And I, I think we need to work on giving the cemetery ordinances, because I think we're gonna start seeing more of this stuff, so that if we already have it.
Yeah, because it looks so nice from the road. You've done such a good job, that now people are interested.
It looks nice inside. I took a ride through there today. It's very, looks very good.
Okay.
Does this mean that a resident can buy more than one grave if they want to?
We have to take, yeah, we have to do, again, we have to do ordinance, because you don't want someone buying like six grave sites and then trying to sell them to other people or a profit. There's all kinds of stuff.
Do you have a contract by the other side that you're gonna be selling?
We, we also like, when we did St. Michael's Cemetery, for a while there, we thought we were landlocked. And we only allowed the grave places, you basically, when you bought the grave, you have to basically show that you have people gonna go into it. Not like my future grandchildren who haven't even been born yet.
Right.
And because we, every cemetery, I'm sure our cemeteries like this, you'll have people buy graves and you go away or.
We have some that there's one person and there's six spots.
And a grave is a legal deed to the land. You don't own the property, but you have, you buy a legal right of burial to that particular grave. That real, that piece of ground. And so it's a serious matter. You can't, if some, an uncraved grave that still has a legal deed to that property, so it's, uh.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's, so.
So we need to, we need to do like a motion.
Okay.
I have a question. Do you, so if you bought a grave in a cemetery, do they als, and do they also allow, not only for the interment of a coffin, do they also allow for a number of cremations to be on that grave also?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, like, I'm gonna use St. Michael Cemetery. At first, we allowed two cremains per single lot. We thought that was a little restrictive, so we upped it to six. So if you bought a single grave, okay, you could have six cremains there on that, that lot, so.
I think that's, I did some of the cemetery classes, I wanted to say.
And that's what I just. That's reasonable.
Well, yeah.
I know there's like Cemetery Rochester, where they stack you on top of each other, like the husband and wife together, do they get that there too?
Like coffins like that? No?
No, yeah.
Okay. I just saw that.
Like a niche.
So, yeah, so that's, yeah, and we, I don't think that we're, we have, we have burial spaces there. I mean, I think we're good.
I think they have plenty around there.
Yeah, but it's still, we need to modify ordinances and get things straight.
Do you ever think of like the niche thing for the herbs and nails?
I think we.
A cullender?
Yeah, that's it. I couldn't think of the name. It was right there, but I couldn't.
And they have scattered gardens now where people who don't have a place, like if they don't wanna keep the remains, but they wanna scatter it, because you're not supposed to do it like, you know, on the Great Lakes or whatever. So now a lot of cemeteries have like a little garden where you can go and scatter, yeah, so we might do something like that eventually too.
There is one cremain there that I entered there in the summer of 2022. I had a very hot summer day down there. Yeah, that was interesting. Can I resonate? Okay, let's make a motion. Okay, we have an idea about. About our ordinances or that.
Well, we need to do, you know, we're not gonna, it has to be paid in full, and then they have to be a resident.
Be a resident.
So money is to do a motion.
And then the rest are fine.
Okay, we have them. You made a motion.
I'll make a motion for the cemetery to, you know, it has to be paid, your grave site has to be paid in full. And the person has to be a resident.
Okay, we have support for that.
Support.
Okay, a motion support. All in favor?
I, I.
Okay, motion carries. Okay, next one is alarm authority security systems invoice. This is for the, the addition out here, for some of the new devices we have to have for security on the new device. So it comes out to $3,109.95.
I'm making a motion, we pay alarm authority security systems $3,109.95 for all of this.
I'll support.
Okay, a motion support to pay alarm authority $3,109.95 for the work on the new addition for a security system. Roll call vote.
Anderson, yes.
Dan, yes.
Kozinski, yes.
Stevens, yes.
Stover, yes.
Okay, motion carries.
Can I add to that real quick? I have, I'll be getting another $2,000 grant that I can use towards that, and I also have another $6,000 grant that.
I just saw that.
Approved. So I have $8,000 that I can use towards the security between the new closet.
Good.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good job.
Absolutely.
Good job.
I'm gonna say you can drag it to the dark end.
No, yeah, I need it for my elections.
God, just. Just want to have some light moments here. Okay, citizen comments, anyone want?
I have a comment. That invoice that you got from Project Control Engineering was $200. What, what do you have to show?
Yeah, I, you know, Brandy, I should have. John probably gave it to his junior engineer, because she sent you a thing saying, yeah, it seems high. And I went to talk to her, and I could tell she was very inexperienced, but I should have had that as a part of this.
Well, I think because the cost is such an important part of your discussion, that her, it seems high. Could she have pinpointed any specifics?
Yeah.
In her review as to what you might be able to discuss with Mr. Ward from another professional standpoint?
$200 bucks, you should ask her, give her a letter that details where it's high, how it's high. No, that's, that's, that's reasonable to add to.
I, I, no, that's a.
You shouldn't have to ask her for that, really.
I know, I'll, I'll reinvent it to her first thing tomorrow.
Yeah, I think that she, at minimum.
Tell me a lot anymore, Paul, see you there.
In training, she'll get it.
Charge me for this.
Done that for you, Joe. I think she should have done it.
Okay, any other questions?
Sorry, sassy tonight, sorry.
Okay.
I have one. Mr. Winnie, you have one, what do you say?
I have it. Anthony Winnie, 5864 Control. Regards to the plan to fire that up.
Yes, sir.
What's gonna happen?
Well, Mr. Plan C, he'll be approaching, he has, they'll be approaching the plant commission for another matter. But rock crushing, special land use, Brandy, he has not.
He has not picked the application up. He's been made aware, as was the other business in that location, that it does require planning permission, special land use, publication in the newspaper, and neighbors within 300 feet of the property receiving a letter of when that public hearing will take place. But they have not yet picked up the application, but are. But our code enforcement officer did pay them a visit, Mr. Manning.
Okay, because they were fired up on last weekend, Saturday, and I went over there and door, everybody locked in the back. And what's happening there, when they shut down Tuesday, somebody called them, because it shut down about ten o'clock, eleven o'clock, there was a cloud of gravel, dust over there. They're not running water, nothing. And all you can see is just floating down a way.
And that'll be a part of the, when they come up for their special land use, that'll be a discussion where they have to mitigate.
You're actually gonna let it go through, or?
I tried, I said that's the planning commission.
Is it the?
No, I'm gonna bring that up too now. Our chairperson, he's a neighbor right across there. He's doing, he's shipping his material to him to do it. Now, how can we have, wait a minute, how can we have a fair, when he's on the board, and he's doing wrong? Yeah, he did wrong to begin with, when he was on the board, and knew better to fire that up and did.
Well, he, he, when he does his, he'll have, he'll come before us, I mean, he'll come before the.
How could he be, how could he be the chairperson that's gonna?
Well, most thing, well, he would recuse himself for that hearing, but, um, he, most of the thing, um, cases that come before the planning commission that doesn't involve his business.
Yes, it does. He's, he's, he's shipping material over to Clancy to get crushed, okay? And he's gonna sit there and say yes or no, if he's gonna get a spelter lamp from that, basically what you're saying. Yes, to accuse himself. I, I understand that, but still, he's still in there.
Okay.
But they'll have to listen when the letters are sent out to the people who live within three hundred feet of that business. Those people are allowed to come to this meeting and talk about it, and write letters of complaint, or put their, their public opinion in, and appear before the planning commission.
Well, Mr. Manning, he also too, I told, um, Mr. Sarkome that on this case, I thought it was a good idea that he recuse himself, and he contacted our attorney to clarify that matter.
Well, any reasonable person would.
Well, and if, if you're having a cloud of dust hovering over your area, you should have the enforcement officer come out and look at it.
I, I, I can't believe you guys didn't send him out there that day, when you called up, or somebody had to call up and shut him down. If he didn't go over there and look at it.
Well, you, you came into the office, told it coming.
Yes, and that was Monday.
And he, I believe, may stand corrected, the very next day, which was Tuesday.
Yes.
Based on, I don't believe you were here, but we let the code enforcement officer know of your concern.
Good.
About it.
About it, and I believe that Mr. Sedstock went to the Clancy site on that Tuesday.
Yes, he did, yeah, I do, yeah, because they, they said, I appreciate that, but he, he had seen that dust over there. If he went over there, he had seen the dust.
And I do believe that he did go, I mean, I could stand corrected, but I believe that based on your concern.
So that's where we're at right now, but.
And I'm not aware of Mr. Sarkome.
Well, this comes into, this guy one here, Farid Zone, and that, he's got a known, and that area there's gotta be heavy industrial, not industrial, they're calling Michigan says heavy industrial for what they're doing. That's why Chartiers is on the other side of Beachway, on that area.
And Ira?
Yes.
Okay, but yeah, we'll be dealing with, uh, Mr. Clancy, with the special land use on this man, okay? All right, thank you. Okay, anybody else? Okay, you, board members?
I know, I wanna talk about my election stuff. So we mailed out seven hundred and ninety-five ballots, um, the absentee ballots. And because we do bulk nonprofit rate, we saved six hundred and thirty-seven dollars doing it that way. So.
Put her on the back for me.
What's that?
Yes.
And our early voting starts October twenty-sixth, which is a Saturday, and it goes for nine days, so it's through November third, and it's from eight AM to four PM. And then there's no voting on the Monday before the election, so that would be November fourth. Early voting ends on the third, but then there's election day, we're open from seven AM to eight PM.
So this is the last meeting before the election.
Yeah, we're scheduled.
Yes. So come vote, whether it's absentee, early voting, or on election day.
I challenge everybody, because two in three people a day on early elections suck.
Yes.
So please come out, tell everybody, get in here and vote.
Hey, we gotta have a family meeting up there, so.
Who says?
I only come one time.
We do, we do have time on the law, how, so let's.
Oh, I do talk about the election, or so.
You know, the early voting.
Uh, some of those.
If people, if people utilize that more, that would help on election day. Plus, it would justify some of the costs we have, and some of the just.
Because there's no justice.
And I still think that you guys need to call the county and demand that the county runs the early voting. Because the amount of money that we spent, and we, we share with Columbus, Columbus comes here. So I can't remember, do you remember, Barb, what our totals were for the people list and August?
It was like thirteen people.
I think, it was like fifty altogether between Columbus and.
I think that was like number three.
Fifty.
Yep, right. But it was for the amount of money that's spent, because we have to pay three election inspectors every day from eight to four to be here.
And feed them.
Yeah.
No, we don't feed them very much, early, early voting. Election day, we do.
Yeah, well, I, I think early voting is a good thing, but if cost-wise or just like in St. Clair County, and there's other counties bigger than ours.
Oakland County does.
Oakland County, and, uh, that would help us out.
Of course.
Do you notice that St. Clair County doesn't want to pay for anything? It always bothers the town chairman, and the city, it's always.
Go ahead and say it.
You guys.
We're gonna have an issue, excuse me. Church Road, boy, about five hundred feet down, somewhere through a couch in a ditch.
A couch?
A couch, really, and I try, we try and get it out, it's too far down. If it gets plugged up.
All right.
There's gonna be.
I already called up there, like, a week ago, and I ain't done nothing.
Okay, let me talk, it's on Church Road, five hundred feet north of, you'd say, how?
Yeah, turn off twenty-six.
Yeah.
Right hand side.
Okay, I'll call them.
No, I think the couch is in the ditch back there. No, it's, uh, just before, in between Andy's place and Church Road. Twenty-six.
Mantrons and everything.
That's too big.
Yeah.
I'll do that.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, but at that point, it's. We're going.
It will.
Mr. Manning, I had them, I had a resident call about some tire thrown ditch on D, the, I called up road commission, they went and retrieved those.
I did it a week ago, and so.
Okay, I, I'll call them.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is like, a lot of people dump a lot of stuff up here.
Yes, they do, especially shingles.
See?
Not to harp on the issue, but.
Okay, Gina, you have some, you went to the, um.
I went to the road, road commission, Roads and Bridges Commission.
Advisory committee?
Yeah, today, for a meeting, this morning. And I just have a little bit of, a few things to report. Um, there was a lady there talking, um, about the spring program for fragmentizing, and so I had to listen in, because there's all these different townships there, and I just kinda zero in on what they're saying about Caskill. So we get it every other year, which I did not know that. I don't know if anybody knew that or not.
That might be.
Yes, right, yeah. And, um, so what they're gonna do next year is they're gonna increase the, um, chemicals portion. Um, and what they do is, one year they do, um, well, we, we get it every other year, and they go around the guardrails with a heavier dose. And in the intersections where we want clear vision, some of the intersections are hard to see. So then they, they're trying to do a, a, a heavier dose there too, because people were having problems with that. Um, okay, and Marine City Highway and Palms Road, the roundabout is, they're, they're bidding at it now. It's still in court, okay, but they think it's gonna get resolved, and so they're putting bids up for that. And Marsh and Marine City Highway, that doesn't have anything to do with us, but it's up there, uh, is having, um, a turnabout and.
Church.
Roundabout.
Roundabout.
Marsh, Marsh.
And twenty-six.
And Marine City Highway.
Well, say goodbye to Marsh, because that's gonna be an expressway.
Yep.
Yeah, there it is.
They're gonna be going faster than they are when they put you roundabout there.
So, so Marsh and Marine City Highway and Starville and Shea, that's close.
Yeah.
Three over the place.
They're gonna put three of them in.
They're gonna have roundabouts at Marsh and Starville and Palms.
So Starville, I can see now.
We'll never get any.
And Church.
I could see Starville now, because some station built their factory right there.
Church and Marine City Highway is getting expanded.
Let's just hope they make them large enough that the trucks can actually. Get around them.
They won't, because they talked about the approaches.
Let's hope that their engineering studies.
Yes.
Make them large enough to take those.
Trucks.
Gravel trucks that are coming from a cloud.
Yeah.
And they can make that without tipping over and hitting a curve. I'm sure they've thought of it.
Well, the one, the one on, on, um.
There's three coming?
Palms, Palms and Marine City Highway, we knew that was coming.
Yes, I have that as well.
And that has a pretty big area there, so that might work out well.
They had it shifted to the south a bit, that's why they're in court, because they have to condemn some land on there. Because if they ran it down that center, one of the issues, there's old fuel tanks.
Yeah, they take out, yeah. Plus all the new cement.
And then one of the corners there's, is owned by like three or four different people.
Yeah, yeah, but.
And one of them is really stalling, because she, what they said is she lives in, in Gross Point, and she doesn't see any need for these things, because they don't have it in Gross Point.
Yeah, they wouldn't allow it in Gross Point.
So Marsh, Marsh and Marine City Highway, Starville and Shea.
Starville and Shea, there's a big plant going in there.
That's Sensation, they just built their new factory.
Yeah, Sensation is there, but who is at the, the other corner that's got the, the huge.
Cordis Brothers.
Cordis Brothers, so that's a trucking company.
Isn't that where Bertie Grace is?
Bertie Grace, Bertie Grace is at Shea and Starville.
That's what she said.
That's what I said.
Shea and Starville.
Yes.
Wait, they just built that new house around there.
Shea and Starville.
Shea and Starville, yes.
What did you say you put around?
I thought you said, I thought you said twenty-six.
I thought you said Marine City Highway.
Oh.
Marine City Highway and, and.
Marsh.
Marsh.
Yeah, Marine City Highway and Marsh, okay.
Shea and Starville.
And Shea and Starville, okay, so there's one here and one there.
That's gonna, there's a lot of intersection.
So you're gonna have two, you're gonna have two roundabouts on a twenty-six mile road before you get to the, uh, expressway.
Yeah, he's right, right where he's gonna.
My nerves are gonna turn into war and race, I can already.
And, uh.
Oh, nice.
If you go up their aggression Palms, they undersize that roundabout, because if you put it in the center, you'll be.
That's what I mean.
Do we have any draft, how they design those?
No.
At the township, because the way they designed that one. I've been in some in a bunch of other counties, and you go right into when you make your turn, like you, there's none of this to the right, to the left, and then, then you go into.
You're gonna have to talk to the county.
This, because I know they screwed up when they did the one at aggression, and they said right out of the gate, like after they did it, like, well.
These are civil engineers, how did they screw up?
Because you don't, you don't have to be smart, they have a college degree. You just gotta have a paycheck.
Okay.
Okay, so that's all I have to do. The time, they are.
I do have, I do have a question about the spraying.
The what?
Is the spraying, if the county does, because I've called them.
Yes.
And in order to get your ditch or whatever exempted, they'll give you a blue sign that you have to go up there and pick up. And then they put it in the ground. I have a problem, because when they sprayed, they sprayed a twenty-foot section from one flag light that I missed, because I usually take care of my own, I missed it, it was already dead. They sprayed a twenty-foot section, killed all my cattails and my gables, and a partridge.
Oh, and a partridge.
And a partridge, probably. Huh?
Okay.
They don't, they just spray and they don't.
Okay, any other questions involved in the road, bridges, bike tourism?
Is there anything we can do about that at all? They'll limit, they'll limit how much poison they're putting into the ground.
But do I have to go up before the road commission, talk to them?
Yeah, that's like talking to a friggin' wall.
Yes.
Okay, I guess we're on the German.
Okay, come on to the German.
I'll say one. That was like opening.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi, um, Kelly?
What?
A German?
I'm Italian.
Oh, okay.
Okay.